Hello, I'm Jeremy Spencer with All on Georgia News, the Camden County affiliate. I'm here with candidate for post two, city council candidate in St. Mary's, Mr. Jim Goodman. How are you today, Mr. Goodman?
Good morning, Jeremy.
Good to see you. So, I just wanted to kinda let the audience, the viewers that are watching, let them know where you're from and how long have you lived in St. Mary's and just a little bit about yourself.
Thank you, Jeremy. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning and for other people to get to know me. A lot of people in St. Mary's remember my family. Of course, the people in the mid-sixties era, nineteen sixty-five graduate of Camden County High School would know me, but like a lot of them, I had moved away and seven years or so ago, decided to move back to home. And one of the things I was immediately struck with was how big, in terms of land-wise, St. Mary's had gotten to be. And then I began to pick up on some ideas about how, how big city it was pretending to be, when in fact, it's a small town and it's very surprising to me. So, I'm happy to be back home. Had a career in healthcare administration, lived in a number of different places. I lived in, mostly in the south and enjoyed every place that I lived. I participated to some degree in some government services arrows, acting coroner in Ware County for a number of years while I was the hospital administrator up there and in Pierce County. And politics is not something that I had sought out actively at any point in life. As a matter of fact, the way that I got to be acting coroner was I ran in that race and I didn't do very well because I didn't really campaign for it, was beat pretty badly. But immediately, the man who won coroner appointed me as his assistant coroner, as a deputy coroner, and retired. So, I became the.
So, that was Pierce County or Ware County?
Ware County.
Yes, sir.
It was. But I'm happy to be back in St. Mary's and I'm happy to throw my head in the political ring. I've been asked why. I made a comment last night, it's a joke, please understand that. Someone said, "Jim, why are you running for city council?" And I said, "For the money." And of course, I got a chuckle and people said, "Well, that's, you know, seven hundred and fifty a month." It's not that money. The money I'm talking about, Jeremy, is the money that I see being wasted in city government. My preceptor in hospital administration trained me very well. And one of the first things he said was, "Jim, you're running a multi-million dollar business here, but you better be able to account for it a nickel and a dime at a time because that's what's going to affect your bottom line." And, you know, hospitals are notorious for having seven-dollar aspirin and things like that. And you have to understand where those costs come from. They come from risks and the city is at a lot of risk. It's placing itself at a major risk by not being prepared, by not doing the things that are necessary for a city to do. And the other thing the city is doing, and this is no secret, the city has become quite a land speculator and developing these public-private partnerships. Well, you know, public-private partnerships suggest that the public is a part of it. And so many people that I've talked with don't feel like we've been allowed to understand or be a part of the backdoor negotiations and the things that are held very close to the vest. And that's, that's quite disturbing when you find your tax bill going up and yet you find city services are declining. And that is the main reason why I threw my head in the ring. I think that someone needs to sit on that dais and say, "What are the long-term costs of this? What's the cost-benefit ratio? What are the strengths, weaknesses, threats and analysis in terms of a business proposition?" Because government is nothing more than big business and it's not being run that way. I think they're, the people on council are good people. I'm not going to be critical of any of them personally. I'm very fortunate that I'm, if the word is appropriate, I don't like the word opposing, but I'm challenging the seat of a very, very nice person. And she's been very cordial to me and that has been a pleasure throughout this campaign and will remain so because we're committed to that. But there's a great deal of public discontent with the city government.
Well, let's get into those issues because you've highlighted a lot of areas very quickly that we're gonna talk about. But let's talk about, you've already said why you're running essentially, but if you want to clarify why you're really running for St. Mary's. You say it's for the money, to preserve our spending and conserve some, some things where the budget is concerned. It looks like that, that appears to be what you're trying to run on, but let's clarify what your platform is. What are you running on?
Well, my platform is essentially to make good decisions. I, I don't think that some of the recent decisions, from a practical standpoint, have been good decisions. Case in point, and it's easy to see it. I think that someone got inspired at, at a street-level bureaucrat level and decided that what was, what Florida was doing on their interstate exchange and some of their secondary roads was absolutely beautiful and it was driving their tourism industry. And I'm talking about the streetscaping, the palm trees, you know, they spent massive amounts of money. They created new monuments, both welcoming and, and thanking people for visiting the state of Florida. And it inspired apparently someone in the street-level bureaucrat status to suggest to the city council that we need to beautify St. Mary's Road. Well, you know, you see the, the vision and they use that word vision a lot, but then you see the spectacle of what happened. Go out on St. Mary's Road and look at that. The seven of the twenty-eight palm trees were dead on arrival and remained so for most of a year. Some of those have been replaced. There's still three that I've counted that are not gonna survive. The weeds are halfway up those, those palm trees in the part of the median that's covered by the barrier rails. The rest of the, the plantings are just second-rate scrub plants and they've complicated the matter of maintaining that highway. It used to be that they could get off on a belly mower or a wish hog and rip down that median and rip down those berms and have a, a nice highway. Now, it's labor-intensive and we don't have the labor and manpower apparently to keep it up. Now, I will forgive a lot for the rain, but even before that, it was scraggly and scruffy looking and litter everywhere. And litter, as people may know, is one of my pet peeves. Probably six out of seven days a week, I'm on a golf cart with a friend of mine from elementary school. We pick up litter in downtown St. Mary's and as far as we can go legally on the golf cart. And, and I could, I probably would not be able to estimate the, the hundreds of pounds, maybe tons of litter that we've picked up off of St. Mary's streets. And we're happy to do it because it's our hometown and, and I'm very proud of my hometown. I love St. Mary's. I don't like to see what's happening to St. Mary's. So, in essence, failing government services would be the, the critical issue. If I had been sitting on that, that dais, I would've said, "Don't do this." I would've also, on the, on the little sign, the monument sign at the pond in front of the former Gilman Mill site, it was, it was decorated on both sides. Welcome to St. Mary's. That seemed strange. What seemed even more strange is they came along almost immediately and put the switch gear, the electrical connections for the fountain and lights directly in front of the backside of that sign. And now, there's pampas grass covering that. So, that's poor planning. You know, why did we spend the extra money for that sign to be worded on both signs, on both sides, excuse me, knowing that, you know, if there'd been a plan, it wouldn't have been done that way? The, the Shrimp Project, the Street Hydro Improvement Project, they had speculated a water feature right in the middle of the square in front of the pavilion. I got on Facebook and began to really criticize that because there are only two ways to really manage that from an engineering standpoint. You either have a hundred percent throwaway water, which is gonna rankle a lot of people because we're paying double water fees. It's an expensive commodity. It's a limited and a finite commodity. DNR will not allow it to be thrown into the river because it's chlorinated water. So, it's gonna have to go back through a treatment process. And let's don't even start the debate about sewage treatment in, in this city. What's the debacle on that? The other way is to filter that water, settle it out, highly chlorinate it and recharge it back into the system. Now, think about the complicated machinery involved in that and think about the fact that that area gets under one or two feet of water fairly frequently. It's happened twice since I've been back and in the few years that I've been back, I've seen it before where it's been in those streets during my lifetime. I'm aware of the fact that, you know, you have to have those pumps and switches somewhere. Now, they would be completely flooded out. All of that improvement that they've done, that people really, you know, couldn't see because it was out of sight, out of mind, the sewage pump-out station and the fresh water for the boaters that came in to live aboard boats, that's all gone. I, I have not heard a single word about whether that was insured, but it was put down there and it's gone from the hurricanes.
Well, let's, let's kinda go with some of the things that you've already said because I wanna, I wanna get through our interviews so that we can hit those main, because you've talked about some of the projects that St. Mary's has put forward. There's a lot of projects going on, as you know. It seems like the last several years, the city has just been project-oriented and I, you know, I do think the city is trying, the current leadership is trying very hard to make St. Mary's as aesthetically pleasing as possible, excuse me, and rightly so.
Yep.
And, and you know, that's, that's the job of, of the city is to maintain and, and also progress things in the city that, that need to be done. However, it seems like since we've had back-to-back hurricanes that there should be some form of a reset button on policy implementation, particularly where the projects are concerning. You mentioned the Shrimp Project. What is your opinion of the location of that project? Is it, if, is it in the right spot? Because currently, for those, for viewers that don't know, the splash pad is going to be in, at the end of Osborne and right, and across the St. Mary's Road, right in front of the pavilion. Is that the best spot for that splash pad?
Well, Jeremy, my understanding is that the splash pad per se, and, and I brought it up as, as a subject because that was what was going to be done. I think what happened is due to public pressure and, you know, I hate to see us resort to Facebook as a change agent for political concerns, but it's apparently pretty effective. Several of us pointed out the folly of this. My understanding, and, and I can't get this straight, is that that's temporarily been put on hold. It's gonna be a grassy berm that's in that area now.
Well, they broke ground yesterday. Did they say anything about that?
Not a word.
Okay.
Not a word. And that, that's part of the problem. There's a lack of communication. They talk a lot about, you know, the public meetings and public input. They schedule the things on, in very inconvenient times and it's, they, they don't seem to be aware of the fact that the people who are paying for this are working people. You know, so when you have a four-thirty or five o'clock meeting on a workday, you know, a lot of people have to commute to work. They can't get there in time. Public participation is not encouraged enough. It's, in some cases, I would use the word discouraged. So, to bring that completely up to date, I can't authoritatively say whether they plan on, you know, proceeding with the splash pad now. My understanding was that city manager met with some business leaders downtown and said that that's temporarily on hold. It'll be a grassy berm at this point. And it sounds to me like they might wanna try to revisit when, you know, the upset at the matter settles down. I don't think it needs to ever settle down. That is the most inappropriate place for it there is to answer.
Is there any other discussion as to where that splash pad might go? Because I know, I know Ms. Williams on the council brought up the, the location she had, she wanted to know if there was a possible place to move it. It just seems like that discussion is not happening. Have you heard anything?
I have not heard anything. As you know, there's a, the only remaining piece of, of land that has not been developed by some improvement is right by Lang's Restaurant between the.
That's the other project I wanted to get at.
The playground area and Lang's Restaurant. As you recall, they were going to put the Turnerville Trolley Building in that location. I stood up in council meeting one night and said, "Don't put it there because of salt water." Vapor, you know, destroying that. Well, the, the city manager point-blank told me not to try to tell him anything about rust, that he'd been in the Navy. And I said, "Well, apparently you don't know everything you need to know about rust because if you put two identical trolleys, one at the present location and the other one on the waterfront, give it a few years and you won't have one of those trolleys and you can guess which one it's going to be." Well, the, the building was rebuilt in its original location, but not before he said, "We plan on air conditioning it." My question at that point was, "Well, why would you go to the extra expense of installing an expensive air conditioning system, maintaining that, operating it, when you don't have to? You simply don't have to build a trolley building in that location." Now, all of that is a matter of, of public record on the tape if anyone tries to deny it. So, the building got put back where it was. I kinda feel responsible for that, that we want to have a picnic area on the foundation of where the trolley buildings have been destroyed. Now, who in their right mind ever wants to sit out in the bright sun on a concrete pad and have a picnic? Who, who are these people that are gonna be doing that? Where are the throngs of people that are demanding a picnic area downtown? It's ridiculous. It's, it's totally ludicrous to think in terms of that. What I think, the, the crux of the problem is, Jeremy, we have a big-city planner and a big-city manager. We're a small city. The crux of the matter to me is we, we seem to be paying experts and planners and people to do a job to treat us with contempt.
Well, you said something that was very interesting because I'm seeing, not just in St. Mary's, I'm seeing in Richmond Hill.
Yes, sir.
I'm seeing it in Statesboro. I'm seeing it in all these different small communities that, all on Georgia covers because we specialize in small, local rural markets.
Right.
And so, we're, we're seeing big-time, like you said, big-time planning policy being pushed into small communities. Where do you think that's coming from?
That is one of the missions I'm on. Are we required to have planners to plan us into death? I don't think we are. I don't think we're required to pay people to cause us misery. I certainly know this. If we are in fact required to have planners, they don't need to be sully. They don't need to be insulting. They don't need to be above us because there is nobody that I've talked to yet that feels like they've been treated at eye level with any of the current people down there and to some degree, the previous one. You feel like you're being talked down to, you're being insulted. You feel like you're a bother to them to go and talk with them. That's not the St. Mary's that I want. The St. Mary's that I want is customer-service driven, responsive to its constituency and not treating the constituency with contempt as the current situation is now. I do believe there needs to be zoning. I do believe you have to control things, but it doesn't need to be at an HOA level. It certainly doesn't need to be enforced with a heavy hand and with the degree of militarism that is being approached. A good friend of mine is, is in court this morning, was told very suddenly after a long time of having to struggle as a business owner, working every day with the effects of damage from the hurricanes, that it had to be cleaned up immediately. Well, the city is not, you know, setting the bar very high in terms of cleaning things up immediately. Let me say this, before it escapes us in all of this roundabout discussion, point-blank, there, there are several communities in, in the State Park Road area, for example, Crooked River Plantation, one and two, Phase One and Two. Those people are one tropical storm away from flooding of several feet in their homes. I've seen it. I've walked the ditches as much as I could. They've been neglected for years and years. It's, the rains that we've had, the forty-plus inches of rains, tested it to the limit. I mean, certainly, we can't stop something like what, you know, our, our friends in North Carolina and South Carolina are going through now, but we should be able to handle a tropical storm and maybe even a hurricane, for goodness sakes, if we keep the drainage ditches open. We're not doing that. They've been ignored completely. Wax murkles are growing up and breaking up a beautiful concrete raceway for the water to, to drain off in. You can see that off of Windling Road. They'll lay eyes on it.
Let's, and you talk, you're, you're hitting me some other areas, so I wanna grab one of the areas you're talking about and continue to, to, to go into this because this, this is part of the project and the, and the long-term planning that the city has put together with their master plan. The Intercoastal Gateway Project, two thousand and eleven, or twelve, one somewhere in there. They, the city bought that for one-point-three million dollars. It sits next to Mr. Lang's Arena. There's been a lot of discontent about that purchase over the years. They expanded the footprint of that property for almost three-hundred thousand dollars north of there to, to do that. The, the project has a public easement around it and that's been Mr. Jim Gant, Councilman Jim Gant's, um, main project is to make sure that's available to the public. There's a lot of questions I have about that, but I'm gonna try to narrow it down to a few. First, should we, should the city, let's back up. Is the city ever gonna sell that property to a private developer with that amount of public easement?
I do not see developers lined up and fighting each other to bid on that property. There's the answer. The answer to those kinds of economic questions can't be found anywhere else except market demand. There is no market demand. We're having to pay people to go out and beat the bushes to try to find somebody that could be interested in this. And then, when they come to the table for that deal, when they see that easement, and thank goodness it exists, I'm almost happy that it does, and, and not only the easement, but other aspects of the property, they're gonna swallow hard. The deal that the city is going to broker for them can't be all that attractive. And let's get, let's get deep into that and I do mean deep.
Okay.
Five feet down, you'll hit water. Now, what was there? I'm, I'm old enough and, and have a very good memory about, you know, seeing that piece of property through the years as a small child. And beyond that ability, you can go and look at pictures and historical documents and plaits and determine very easily. Most of that is filled in. Now, where did the fill come from? I never really understood that, but I had some old timers tell me and they know what they're talking about and the story has been consistent. And the core samples prove it. That was filled by the, the people, the owners who developed Gilman Paper Company. It was done at a time when permitting was almost non-existent. They were industrialists. They had the capacity and the ability and the machinery and the manpower to do it. And they simply filled in the marsh and a creek. And now, we're trying to say that you can build a multi-story hotel on it? No, thank you. When you pull core samples, which we ask about them and ask about them and ask about them, they, they would never answer that question straightly.
I remember you posting something about that. You got a letter saying that that was done and in previous Intercoastal Gateway meetings, Mr. Gant said that it hadn't been done, but it has been done.
Well, I like Jim Gant and he apparently was some kind of engineer in the Navy, but what engineer talks about a piece of property without talking about its abilities to sustain weight, its load-bearing characteristics? And if you do in fact have a core sample, why don't you talk about what that core sample reveals? It turns out that that core sample existed for almost one year, almost to the day because it was done on September the first, twenty seventeen, right at the end of August, within a couple of days of the end of August. Yes, we found the letter miraculously. What does it show? Very, very unstable readings, very poor readings, exactly what we thought organic material. It's not going, you, you would have to drive pilings from here to China to get that, to sustain the weight of a multi-story hotel, pass code. Either that or you would have to go in and clean it completely out. Now, would the Army Corps of Engineers allow that detail of a work, that much engineering go on? I have serious reservations about that. That whole situation, if you're asking what's gonna happen to it, I, I don't see anything great happening to it. I think there was a missed opportunity when Mr. Calvin Lang approached them and was going to build on the existing Gilman Dock House structure that was there, a wing this way and a wing that way. And think of what, they talk about a boutique hotel. Think about the person who's coming in to go on a tour of Cumberland Island. They're not coming in here dressed to the nines and, you know, wearing six-hundred-dollar, you know, shoes. They're coming in here in their walking shoes and their approach boots and they're going to camp out and go to an island the next day. Now, rather than them staying at a motel off the interstate in Kingsland and having to unload everything out of their car for fear of it being taken, they could pull right up to the, to the room, go in, sleep, watch the sunset, watch the sunrise, see the boats come and go. They would be back every year. We would've had a use for that property that would've exceeded any expectations. And yet, the city outbid the man, they point-blank told him that they were going, he might as well not even bid. Well, Mr. Lang was smart enough to realize he couldn't fight city home and he literally didn't.
Well, let's, let's wrap up the Gateway Project with this, with this, these last two questions. We're eight years later, okay? And we don't have a developer. And, you know, several of the councilmen, you know, particularly Mr. Bob Nutter, who, who's not running again, said that, you know, whether you like the project or not, we have it in our lap and we have to do something with it. What is your, what is your answer to that? If you are elected to council, what are you going to vote to do with it?
I think sometimes it was best said by, by someone here in town that the first money you lose is the best money you lose. Unfortunately, after the first money we lost, we went ahead and put two, three-hundred thousand dollars more into it. We, we've lost money. Let's quit losing money. Let's admit it. It's not the kind of property that you're gonna develop a multi-story boutique hotel on. Let's give it to the people. Let's have a park. You know, land is scarce. They're not making any more of it, as Will Rogers said. It would be a beautiful location for events such as Rustic Aluza. It would be a great town commons area. It's a wonderful site to watch the fireworks from. That's what St. Mary's is about to a lot of people is. You know, right now, you have a hard time even getting downtown to watch those fireworks. Think about, instead of everybody trying to bring their car downtown, let's, you know, get shuttle buses, have parking out at some of the bigger parking areas, the shopping centers and stuff and, and bus people in, let them watch those fireworks and that way we don't have gridlock, you know, leaving that, that area. So, it's something that people could use.
So, you're for leaving the park?
I am.
You're for leaving that area open to the public?
Yes, I am. I think we, St. Mary's needs development, but it doesn't need to be down in that area. It's too crowded down there.
Okay. And let's transition, that's a good transition into the next, the next topic, which is economic development.
Jeremy, you're saying that I've wandered around in the suburbs. There's so much to talk about.
There is. And let's focus on economic development because you're now touching economic development. A lot of planning, a lot of time and money has been spent on making sure that downtown is viable in St. Mary's. And that is a policy that has often echoed in many small towns across the state of Georgia. Delonica has a thriving downtown. Helen, Georgia, I can't say enough about Helen, Georgia. It's a huge thriving, small, huge thriving tourist destination. And then, you've got Cleveland, Georgia, which is also another small community that has a very nice tourism and shopping areas in the state of Georgia. St. Mary's used to be that way, but the economic development in that area is no longer like it used to be. Where do you see the future of economic development in St. Mary's?
That is driven by market forces. And right now, we have two restaurants struggling to open downtown. I've talked with one of them and I asked him, I said, "How's this going for you?" He said, "If the city will leave me alone, I can finish opening this restaurant." But it's changed this and changed that. And if the city will get out of their way, do what's necessary in terms of health and safety and, and get away from the fluff and dander of micro-managing business, let business, let business thrive. And if we had people coming into town and market demand was driving more restaurants and more bed-and-breakfast-type places and more gift shops and whatever else it is, the novelty of, of the areas that you've mentioned would be St. Mary's all over again. And I think maybe in some ways, the, the, the street project is playing into that. I hope that's the outcome of that, but private enterprise is the only way to go with that. The government really just needs to get out of the way and make it safe and make it secure and let the market forces prevail in this. The four-oh-one restaurant, and probably shouldn't mention these places by name, they had an incident where the, the code enforcement officer went up, got them off the job, took them down and said, "Your vehicles are parked on the grass." It's a construction site, for goodness sakes. They've got a dumpster sitting out there. And he's trying to enforce a, a code that I'm not sure is even in effect yet about you can't park on grass, you have to park on concrete. No, this is a construction site, an entirely different thing. They lost time doing that. That's, that's over-enforcement. That's, that's the city getting in the way of a businessman trying to open a restaurant. That's the problem. The city is not very welcoming. They'll hand you a, a couple of manuals and then they'll change them in the middle of the process. That's a consistent story that I get from the people that are putting their investment and their sweat equity on the line to open a business. That is wrong.
Let's go into that, taxes and fees, because that has everything to do with opening a business. Recently, the, the council voted to increase taxes, even though St. Mary's is still kinda low in terms of all the cities in the county for taxes. It adds up when you start adding on school board taxes and, and county taxes in addition to the new city that increased by almost seventeen percent. What, what is your position on the new tax increase? Was their explanation good enough to raise the taxes in St. Mary's this time?
Their explanation was wonderful for them. It does not sit very well with the average taxpayer. We, of course, are gonna be skeptical of, of information that comes to us, that hits us in the pocket. Taxes are a necessary evil. I understand that. Before taxes ever occurred, you better be running an efficient operation. Case in point, seven days, excuse me, five days. Um, case in point, seven days, excuse me, five days a week, a very, very dedicated city employment spend, employee spends two hours a day blowing the leaves off of Osborne Street from behind City Hall, around the end on Dillingham Street, and up to the ward in Andy's building. Five days a week that's done. I never see a pile of leaves. But he's out there at seven o'clock every morning, when I'm out picking up litter, he's out there. Nice guy. Wish, wish everybody worked as hard as, as this gentleman does. Uh, two hours every morning. Um, I suggested point blank directly to the Director of Public Works, "Let that man go by and do that Monday morning. Let him check on it Tuesday, Wednesday, maybe do it again Thursday if it needs it, but, you know, check on it. If there's a rainstorm or a windstorm, go take care of it. Take those other eight hours in that week and put him at the cemetery. Put him on some of these roads leading into town that look so bad. Why are we doing this?" Well, you know, there's no real explanation other than that nobody in City Hall wants to look at a couple of oak leaves on the pavement. Um, you know, perish the thought that they should have to step over a couple of oak leaves. That's wrong. It's mismanagement. It's waste of resources. So taxes on one end, but manage what you have, for goodness sakes. Um, uh, you know, I don't want to be critical of individual employees, but there's a white fleet of vehicles every morning. Sit downtown and watch them. They ride and they look. They don't get out, they don't do anything. The ones that do get out are doing things like during the height of the rainstorms, turning on sprinklers. Maybe don't turn those sprinklers on, you know, when it's raining, and let that water go to waste. Just things that, you know, you do it because you've been told to do it. Somebody needs to redirect that situation.
Let's talk about fees, uh, tax fees, business fees. Um, it's, it's been said that St. Mary's, I mean, it's been said for years. And it's also been said by, to me, by some of the members of the chamber, who will go unnameless, uh, that St. Mary's is the hardest community in Camden County to start a business. Um, how would you change that if you're elected?
Streamline the process. Do away with anything that's not absolutely necessary. Let people rise to the occasion. Maybe the business owner is going to far exceed the net total of what you're asking him to do if you simply say, "We're not going to hassle you about all of these fees and all of this enforcement until you do something that is clearly a violation of health and safety code." You know, for instance, the, the Historical Preservation Committee told a, a developer-owned stable alley that he couldn't have wagon wheels at his, at his business. Wagon wheels on stable alley, because it was not in keeping with the historical, uh, flavor of downtown St. Mary's, because it was a maritime, you know, a nautical theme. It's stable alley. As a young boy, I saw carts, horse-drawn carts on stable alley. I lived on stable alley. It was stable alley because the stables were there. What is not in keeping with the history when you have carriage wheels, you know, buggy wheels as part of the decoration for your business, placed very, very tastefully?
That, that kind of goes back to what many citizens have said, is that we've got people on these community boards that don't understand the past of the city.
Absolutely.
That, that's interesting that you bring that up. Um, couple more topics. Um, the big one, uh, well, well, there's three, but we'll kind of, we'll get through the, we'll get through this one, I think, pretty quickly. Zoning and planning proposed codes. That is probably one of the most heartburn issues for many citizens in the St., in St. Mary's. Um, two, uh, planning commission members resigned because of the static between what was wanting to be done and what had to be done. Um, they resigned, and we have one commission member not even get appoint, reappointed, and they replaced them all. And so now the codes, uh, that were coined, homeowners-type codes, are now sent to the council, and they have, they're now having work sessions on those codes. Um, you've been very vocal about, about the codes, about, uh, you know, how restrictive they are. Um, if, if the council votes them in before you take office, if you're elected, which I don't think is going to happen at this point, uh, meaning the codes being passed, um, when, if you do inherit those codes, what are you going to do on council with those codes?
I plan at every meeting during the part where each individual council member has a free rein, because I'm sure I'll never make an agenda item out of this. It'll never be approved as an agenda item. But I plan on saying at every meeting, wh- whatever it is that we've done, for instance, let's repeal these draconian codes. Let's look at this. We're thwarting, um, you know, the welcoming map for the city of St. Mary's, not only for businesses, but for residents who want to come here and enjoy the, the waterways and the things. Well, that requires boats, and you, you have to store them someplace. If you can't keep them tastefully and out of the street and into your yard, where can you keep them? Well, you'll be paying a hundred dollars a month or so to store just about anything. So at every meeting, I plan to point out something and make a motion, um, if, if that's the proper forum to do it, just to bring it to the forefront until there are enough people who get tired of hearing it to say, "Okay, well, let's make an agenda item out of this." And let's, you know, maybe, maybe the next time around, we'll have more people. We can override some of this. It's, uh, zoning is required, and enforcement of zoning for really, really egregious situations is absolutely required from a health and safety standpoint. What they've done is overstepped that to the level of an HOA. And that's not what I signed on for. My wife and I could have bought anywhere in this town that we wanted to. We chose not to live in an HOA. I, I don't have a problem with people who want to live in HOAs. God bless them. They can have it. I've done it before myself. Um, I didn't enjoy it that much. Um, I'm not exactly Sanford and Son, but when I want to work on something, I want to work on something. And I think that's the way most people are. And I keep it neat, and I keep it out of sight, but we don't need that.
Um, going into authorities, um, there's two authorities I want to speak about. The hospital authority and the, uh, public service authority. Uh, let's go into the St. Mary's Hospital Authority. It, it does business as a senior center authority. Um, uh, and, and for many years, they've had, they've had a back and forth with the city on, on a variety of issues. Recently, it's been, uh, about the funding. Um, and at their last meeting, uh, the Board Chair and the, um, uh, seat, uh, Hospital Authority Attorney spoke with the city manager, and they're looking to have a meeting to possibly not have a dispute, to take to court, to basically interpret what the real job is of the Hospital Authority and, um, the approval of spending from the Hospital Authority. Because now what's being said by the city is that the Hospital Authority has to have approval of expenditures from the city, because they never, they haven't had consistent audits. Their first audit, it was in two thousand twelve, since their fifty-seven year of existence. In two thousand and, uh, now they're having to go back and do audits for two thousand sixteen and seventeen. So the city is, it looks like they're playing a power play. You've got to have this form filled out, and we've got to approve your expenditures for, for audits. So that's what the relationship is currently. Um, what is your position on how the Hospital Authority should be handled by the city? And is the city doing the right thing by censuring, uh, you know, uh, members of the Hospital Authority for, for, you know, indignant emails that were sent? It just seems like that entire relationship with the senior center, with the Hospital Authority and the city is not productive, but they keep saying it is. What is your position on that?
Well, as you know, um, there, there are some specific requirements for hospital authority entities in the state of Georgia. What we have here is something I've never seen before. I've worked for many, uh, county-owned and operated hospital authorities. I was a, a chairman of the, um, National Association of County Home, owned and operated hospitals in, for, for the United States, and, uh, never seen anything like this in my life. So to tell you what it should be, I really don't know. That, that would take a Philadelphia lawyer to figure that one out, and perhaps that's the problem. We do have some attorneys on that. We have an attorney on the city, and everybody has their own opinion about it. What I'm more concerned about with, rather, rather than trying to solve the problem of how it should be structured, because there is no precedent for it that I know of, is what's happening to the seniors? What is happening to the seniors? There was an incident where a, a lady that I've known all of my life, as a matter of fact, as a church nursery worker, she fed me and changed me and through the years disciplined me, and, and I've said very honestly, she was smart enough to keep me away from her teenage jo- daughters as I became a young man, and I love her to death. And she was accosted, and that's the only word to use. And out of that came a complaint, and the response, as I can see it, has been to install video cameras in the senior center. Now, I've had responsibility for a lot of, uh, nursing homes and senior centers. I was a Director of the Area Agency on Aging for nine counties in, in the coastal Georgia area, uh, more inland than the coastal area, uh, Area Planning Development Commission. And there were probably a total of around fifteen facilities in that. I have never seen video cameras in a single one of them. It's not the answer. Uh, the, one of the senior citizens got up and complained about that video camera. I don't blame him. That's a social place. What should have happened is the parties involved should have been disciplined. They weren't, as far as I'm, I can tell. And the, the director has done a marvelous job. She needs to be left alone.
Well, let's talk about the structure of, of that. The city has an interesting structure, and I've spoken with the city manager about the structure of the senior center program. You have the director, which is the Human Resources Director, Miss Donna Larson. Then you have Miss Rindy Howell, who is the coordinator. And so, and of course, the coordinator answers to the director, director answers to the city manager. So I've asked the city manager, "Why is that in an organizational structure that way? Why is the HR director a department director over a senior center when she's supposed to be working with Human Resources and Employment Concerns?" On ca-, if you're on council, how would you address that, that change? Because I, it seems like that that's also another issue in communication with the city.
Absolutely. And let me be clear. The director that I was referring to was Rindy Howell, is having done an excellent job and who needed to, to be supported and not to be videoed, uh, with one aim directly at her office, for goodness sakes. And, and what's happened with this committee is, I think, out of, uh, a difference in tastes for food between regional, you know, areas of the country, uh, they've examined things that, uh, un- until they were thoroughly examined, were tolerable. They, they weren't intolerable. It's a matter of taste. It's not a matter of health, per se, because people who are on restricted sodium diets are responsible for that themselves. People who are diabetics are responsible for, for eating healthy. It's not the nutrition program, per se. Now, there is sensitivity for that, but they got into the micromanagement of this. And I, I can't explain to you why a personnel director has a department head responsibility. I think it goes back to the, the way the city manager has organized things. Um, there, there's apparently a great deal of discontent in that. Uh, I think that, uh, the, the entire situation of, of personnel management from the city manager all down needs to be reviewed, quite honestly.
What is your, what is your opinion of the, uh, Senior Center Task Force? Because the advisory committee was dissolved, and then there was this task force that was created to look at best practices of how the senior center was operating. Do you think that's the right approach to, to study something that, uh, that needed, uh, some cha- because obviously, there's, there's, there's definitely discontent and dissidence between the authority members and the city management structure of the senior center. That, that's apparent. Um, but you can't get others to say that. But it's apparent from the outsiders looking in that that's what's going on. Do you think the task force was the right move?
I think that the task force was well-intended, but unqualified. I read a white paper that the task force produced, and as a thirty-something-year veteran of long-term care administration, I had no idea what I was reading. It had nothing to do with the day-to-day operational problems that I think have been manifest at that senior center. It, it's just, and, and I would invite people to get that document and read it for themselves. You cannot make any sense of it whatsoever. It does not address the issue. They micromanaged, um, it, they, they intended to do the right thing, but they failed miserably in that. So that's the wrong approach. You, you would take qualified people to know what those, those, uh, programs are. And I will tell you this. I looked at nursing homes, and I look at that senior center as a warehouse of the distilled wisdom of the ages. Those people in that senior center are not stupid. They, they're elderly. I'm elderly. I'm seventy-one years old. I don't think I have that degree of diminished faculty at this point, neither do they. They know what they want, and they can express themselves very well. They're being treated like children, and that is not right. They could self-govern better than any committee could govern them. It would, it would level itself out. It would be a democracy if they would be allowed to do it. Leave them alone. Uh, the, the authority that has a, a role in this, and I don't quite know, you know, how it came to be, I understand, about the sale, you know, of the, of the hospital, and, you know, that, it-
They have a trust that they manage, and they use that money to, according to the consent order, it says to operate and maintain the senior center. And then there's a, and, and there's an explanation of what that means, uh, in, in the consent order, but that's what the headline says in, in the consent order. And so there's been some back and forth with what that's supposed to mean. All along, the Hospital Authority has been providing the food program, financing that, and financing some programs. So really, they're just there to finance programs that benefit senior center at this point.
Well, then, their job would be to hire someone who knows what they're doing and to continue to support it financially as long as it's achieving the results that they want and to, and to address individual things that are not achieving those results. I would think that they need to stay out of day-to-day operations. There are too many cooks in the kitchens, apparently.
Well, let's move into the last topic, which is the Public Service Authority, which is, manages our recreation facilities and some other programs in the county. And the city of St. Mary's, along with Woodbine and Kingsland and the county, throw in money each budget cycle to, uh, fund the, the Public Service Authority operations. Uh, and it's been a, it's been a statewide, uh, article and news. It's been all over the state about the mismanagement of the Public Service Authority and the, and the firing of, of Mr. William Brunson and the Assistant Director. I learned yesterday that the GBI, excuse me, yes, the GBI has completed the forensic audit. They have completed it, but they're not releasing the information to the public at this time. There is a special call meeting next Wednesday. Uh, I'm not sure what it's about, but I have a feeling it's about some findings they may have found in the forensic audit. Um, St., all the cities and the county forked up over seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, to, to bail out the PSA. The city of Kingsland looks to probably spend more, and most likely, the city of St. Mary's looks to spend more. If you're on, and there is an agreement about the funding, and it essentially has handcuffed the council to vote for this, that they have to vote to bail this out, because it's a contractual agreement. Where do you stand on that issue? And if you're elected, how, what do you think should happen to that agreement? And what do you, uh, how, and do you think that the board, the PSA board should be restructured?
In, in my dealings in operating ill-emocentary institutions, county-owned and operated hospitals, had I been responsible for embe- embezzling money, and I never was, let me make that very clear. I have a spotless record in that regard. I would, I would not only have been fired, but I would have expected the board that did not oversee me also would have been fired. It's government, um, at this point, and it doesn't work quite that way, but in a, in a private situation, that certainly would have happened. And, and in a hospital authority situation, I think it would have happened. But in city and county government, I don't think it's quite that easy to do, but somebody's responsible. You have to inspect what you expect. You give an operation money, and you don't audit them, that's unfathomable. And they say that they were getting an audit? I looked at the city of St. Mary's audit, um, a hundred and seventy-two pages. About seven or eight of them had hard numbers on them. The rest of it was a brochure. It, it, it's the most ridiculous financial audit I have ever seen in my life. If, if I'm on council, I will promise you, an audit is going to look like an audit. It's not going to look like a puff piece, uh, because it's just tiresome to try to get in that document and figure out what you're looking at, wh- money in, money out, you know, you can't find it. You have to wade through it. Have you looked through one of those?
I, I have. I just couldn't have the attention span to finish it.
That is exactly right. You know, you can have your fine brochure, your Chamber of Commerce puff piece, that's one thing. Have it and have it in spades and make it look wonderful. When you have hard numbers, deal with hard numbers. You know, look at the budget. Um, it's, I, it's maddening to me. It, it's just maddening.
Do you think that the PSA agreement needs to be changed?
Well, obviously, it needs more oversight. Um, somebody's got to be held accountable for this. It's, it's ridic- ridiculous to me to see each one of the governments, and I've seen that Kingsland and St. Mary's do this, giving awards to themselves for financial management in the face of, of a multimillion-dollar loss? No way. No, it doesn't make any sense at all. And it's, you don't do that.
Well, the, the, we've hit a lot of loaded topics and this was probably the most loaded interview that I've had in terms of topics and discussions and getting the, so I do appreciate you coming. If there's any final words you want to say to the voters, you can say that now.
You know, the thing that I think that I'm going to say, uh, Jeremy, to the citizens of St. Mary's is vote, just vote. And if, if I've managed to convince people that I'm going to pay attention and ask for, uh, things to be explained and ask for hard answers and be very critical of, of making things inconvenient for the citizens and very, very critical of secretive type dealings, that's, I'm their man. You know, I can do that sort of thing. That's all I can ask for. I'm not going to make a bunch of promises. Uh, particularly if we don't, um, more or less sweep this thing, I'm going to be a lone voice. And I've been asked, you know, how are you going to be able to stand being so unpopular? I don't care. Uh, I've lived to the point in life that I don't, I'm not striving for the next promotion. I, I, I don't know anybody in St. Mary's anything and I don't know anything in this world that I couldn't write a check for. I might have to shift some money around. But I don't know anybody anything. And I can speak my mind and, and I've lived long enough to feel like I'm comfortable enough to do it. I won't hurt anybody's feelings. I want to be civil to people, but I'm going to call things as they are. You know, there, at this point, city government is not leading. Uh, people are very dissatisfied with it. I want to see if I can change that.
Well, I do appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And, um, thank you very much.